Director of the Wright County Planning Commission for April 15th. The first item on the agenda today is a meeting minutes from March 18th, 2021. Does anybody have any additions or corrections, or do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? There's no discussion, we'll have a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Bravender.
Bravender votes aye.
Bellger aye.
Maul aye.
Catchmark aye.
Thompson aye.
All right, motion carries. Oh, I should've asked Sean, is anybody online?
Pat, Pat is.
Yeah, is Malmberg online?
Maulberg is on, he votes aye.
Okay, thank you Pat, sorry. And Cory, Tanner?
No.
He had something come up and was unable to.
Okay, so we just have Pat online, okay. I'll try to remember you, Pat. All right.
It's okay.
First on the agenda is the Ross Danielson, and with that, the public hearing has been closed, so it'll be just up here, is there anything we need to add to that, Sean?
Mr. Chair, on the last meeting, the public, we closed directed staff to have a finding. I don't know if the policy is a vote. That has not taken place. County Board would have to rest on that. But what is in front of you are findings, question, and final.
Okay, thank you Sean. So, that brings it back up here, has everybody been able to read through the findings as presented?
Mr. Chair.
Dan?
Is it an option for us to move this on to the county board without us making a decision here on the planning commission? Is that something we can do, Sean?
Mr. Chair, Ray.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Bravender, you could make a motion to refer it up to the county board, I guess, just given the findings as presented, you don't have to approve it, I guess, in any way, but, or just refer it, it's kind of up to you, you can do whatever you want, you're not the final decision maker on this.
I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Chair, that we refer this on to the county board.
Great, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair. Now, I would also ask the maker of the motion, I'm sure the individual applicant would like to say his piece at the county board meeting relative to an anticipated request for withdrawal. And would that be acceptable to you, Dan, for the, in other words, perhaps the motion could state, we will refer it to the county board, so the applicant has a opportunity to, but, request withdrawal, because this body can't do it, is my understanding.
Right.
I believe that would.
Encourage it?
Encourage the motion, because we're not making any decisions, if this passes, the county board will make the decision as to what his request would be.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I guess.
Okay.
Yes, all right.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Motion made and seconded, and still in discussion, is there any other discussion?
I guess I'm not understanding exactly why you'd want to make that motion.
Because it's giving the applicant any opportunity, has, it's giving him the opportunity to withdraw it, rather than have it rejected, or deny based on findings, and the county board can make that decision, whether to deny it on findings, or to grant him the option of withdrawing it without the findings, does that make sense?
Or does he want to withdraw it?
That's, that's something that I've made a decision, and that's why I made the motion, and then, from that point, it's up to the applicant to go to the county board, and they have more, the county board has more options to do it both ways, we don't, we only have one option, okay?
Commissioner Maulberg, I have a question.
Are you done? Dan?
The reason I'm doing this is because I believe it's going to give the applicant more options for the withdrawal process, if that's what he wants to do.
Has the applicant requested that?
Applicant, the public hearing is closed.
We, we don't know, because the public hearing is closed, so it's between the board members, at last meeting, we asked for findings.
Yes, I know.
And deny it, so then, once we close the public hearing, it's between the board members and what we want to do with motions, or, and basically what his motion is, is to send it on to the county board for them to make a decision, and not, and for us not to give a referral. Pat, you wanted to say something?
I have a question, and I'm not sure whether it's for Mr. Riley or Counselor Kreiser, where is the policy written, if it is written, that the planning commission does not accept withdrawals after public meetings are closed and staff have been directed to create findings?
Commissioner Maulberg, I can probably take that. Are you got it right there, Sean, go for it.
Mr. Chair of the Planning Commission have a binder of policies established by the Planning Commission, specifically policy statements on procedures and decisions. In all cases where votes have been taken to direct the county attorney or staff to draw the formal findings, the denial of the applicant's request, the application won't be allowed to be drawn. Attempts to this policy shall be only in rare circumstances where there would be a substantial injustice, thus the decision as ridiculous. County Board does not have that policy in place.
I didn't hear the last part.
Very good, thanks, Mr. Riley.
The county board does not have that policy.
I'm not sure that I understood what you said.
The Planning Commission has a policy of not being able to allow withdrawal of findings consistent with the, unless they've been prepared. I was asking where that was, policy.
Where the county commissioners don't have that policy, so they, they can't, is that my understanding correct, Sean? The county commissioners can accept a withdrawal.
They can decide as they see fit.
Right.
They can what?
They can decide as they see fit.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mike?
Thanks for clearing that up, my thought is that there is a policy in place, it was followed, there was a time and place for the withdrawal request to occur, and it didn't, and I'd like to stick to the policy in this case, and stick with the denial and the findings that Attorney Kreiser provided.
Well, is there any other discussion, because we have a motion on the floor in a second, Sean?
I would have one question for Ray. Ray?
Go for it, Sean.
I have findings prepared, and I have signed and dated and preparated by the county of the applicant, and provide a copy to the county board, as part of the record, why are you doing that, the way you think about the motion by the Planning Commission?
I think you can give the copy to the applicant, if he's there and present, given the motion on the table, which is really just to refer it up, I think we'll have to amend the proposal that I have on page three of the staff report. But if the applicant is there, Sean, I'd recommend giving them a copy of what you have, and then we'll amend it later for the board.
All right, Sean? Is there any other discussion here at the board? If not, we proceed to vote by roll call vote.
Bravender votes aye.
Bellger votes aye.
Catchmark votes no.
Thompson votes no.
I get to choose which, okay?
Maulberg votes no.
Maul votes no, motion fails. Do we have another motion?
Make a motion to accept the findings drawn up by Attorney Kreiser, in denial of the request.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion made and seconded, do I have any other discussion? Do I have any other discussion? There's no other discussion, roll call vote, please.
Bravender votes no.
Bellger votes no.
Catchmark votes aye.
Thompson votes aye.
Maulberg votes aye.
Maul votes aye, motion passes, four to two, the record show that Bellger and Bravender voted no. Thank you, Sean, thank you. All right. Number two on the agenda is John Teter.
The Chair, they are requesting more time, looking professional, I think.
All right.
They're asking to continue the hearing, or next year.
Okay.
Which is?
Sean, would it be possible for you to speak?
They're requesting to continue the item, Toby.
Yeah, okay.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion to continue item two, on May 13th.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, roll call vote, please.
Bravender votes aye.
Bellger aye.
Catchmark aye.
Thompson aye.
Maulberg aye.
Maul is aye, motion carries, thank you. Number three on the agenda will be the Kami Holdings.
I don't want my hand raised, take that out.
This is a continued item.
Yes, this is a.
I don't want to raise my hand.
All right, do you want to give your name to Terry for the record, please?
Paul Otto. Paul Tucey, representing Kami Inc.
Okay, Sean, when you're ready.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission, this item was continued for a site inspection. The first item is on the large agricultural parcel west of the road, and the next item concerns the plating of the property. Property is restricted, is owned agriculture, not in the land use plan. If it needs by the Planning Commission, because it has a repairing feature, is it a property, property especially suited for development, to be resolved, a residential, one building Now, proceed this order, I'll wait another minute.
Is there anything that the applicant wants to add to that?
Yeah, I can add a little bit, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry I couldn't make it to the site inspection, I was on the North Shore with my family for Easter, but I don't know really what you looked at out there, I did go visit the property in between our last meeting and this meeting, just to get a better look at it, and see, especially at this parcel, where I thought a home could be built, and I think a home north of Pilger, kind of in, in the, pretty much straight north, if you take, Pilger comes down and does an S curve, and if you, the westerly part of that S curve, if you would go north, there's a nice knob in there, and there's a trail that goes back in there, I don't know how far the Planning Commission ventured in there, but that's kind of.
Can you point to that, Paul, just to me?
Uh, yeah.
How would you propose to get to that?
There's a, there's a, there's a trail right through here, just expanding that trail, that's why I say, I don't know if the Planning Commission actually walked out there or not, but I did go down that, that, access along Pilger is not my client's property, so that you have to access from the west side, but they have a trail that goes, goes right down, yeah, Sean's kind of following it, it comes up on that hill.
Access from the east side.
Right, and there's a road approach already on the corner of Pilger that gets into there, so, that's the spot that, I guess if I, if I was looking at this lot, that, to me, seems like a reasonable place to build, it's kind of consistent with the house to the south, and then it's consistent with the proposed house on the parcel to the west, which was very similar piece of property to this.
Yeah, I never shared this, I forgot one, I remember their home site.
So that's what I would look at, if that, you know, somebody could build anywhere out there, as long as they need setbacks, so they could build up on the north, well, east side of it too, but more likely, that would be the place to build on this property, and take advantage of the views of the lake and the use of the lake, so, I can answer any other questions you have.
Chair?
Go ahead, Ken.
John, could you go back to the land use plan map? So that subject parcel is not in the land use plan. Mr. Chair, Mr. Riley, the proposal for AR, this particular property meets all requirements in terms of the frontage, and obviously size, does the lake shore come into play on that?
It does, it needs to have 300 feet upon the shoreline.
And he's me-
It has that.
It has that?
But it doesn't have enough to further subdivide under eight acres of land.
So under today's standards, we could pretty well be assured there would not be any further division of that 29 acre parcel, albeit potentially zoned AR today.
It would not meet the standards for two repairing it, or zone.
Okay, very well, that answers my question, thank you.
Is there any other questions here?
I have a question.
Janice?
My question is this, when we were out there, we parked alongside of Pilger, that's where we parked our vehicles, and that little area right there is where we thought that would be where the building site was going to be, is this not so, has this changed?
It's, it's, but it's 29 acres, Jan, so you could build a house anyplace on the property you wanted, what Paul is saying, that, you know, where we came out, where we were standing when we were done, if you looked down, we didn't walk on that, we were told it was there, and you could see that path going in, so I don't, unless, when I left, nobody had walked on it or walked back up again.
No, no.
What Paul is suggesting is that, if we would've walked on that and went up on there, there is an area for a building site and sewer, and that way you could, you know, you'd be down by the lake.
Well, that wasn't the impression that I took away from the meeting.
Okay.
Because I thought that where we parked, and what, what the, what Mr. Bergman was saying, was that he was planning to build up in that area. Wish we would've known that, it was clear.
But, but you also have to take, when we're out on a site inspection, it's a, everybody's one, it's 29 acre piece of property, there's multiple places a house could be placed.
Yeah, so I realize that, but.
So you kind of have to take that as a grain of salt, when you're out there, you have to look at, you know, kind of the whole aspect.
Okay.
Where you could put a house.
I know, is this the gentleman, he owns that whole 29 acres?
No, I'm representing the ownership group who has the purchase agreement for that parcel and the east side of Pilger.
It's just a purchase agreement, then, you don't-
We have, we have a valid purchase agreement, and we're working towards closing on that
Satisfied, for now?
I guess.
Any other questions here from the board, or considerations? Pat, do you have anything?
Mr. Chair, do we have a public comment, period, next?
Okay, no, not yet, Sean, do we have anybody from the public?
I believe, I believe we have one gentleman online, I don't know if it's more in regards to the next part of the request, there's somebody online that wanted to speak to the Kami Holdings, only request. You have to unmute yourself if you want to speak.
No?
Yes.
Am I supposed to have the chance to speak now, where, I can't hear what you're talking about, I want to hear from the Kami proponents.
Mr. Merritt, we are on the-
This is Merritt, right.
We are on the part of the request about the property on the west side of Pilger, the 29 acres.
Yes, I'm here as a individual opposing this rezoning, from my long-term acquaintance with this proposal, and I, until last night, I was a member of the Board of Trustees of Hennepin County, Hennepin Church, I was asked to resign, because I've been opposing this for a good reason, when I first heard about this proposal, back in the summer, late summer of 2019, I immediately thought of the best law we have in Minnesota, Minnesota Environmental Rights Act, which I was responsible for the state adopting when I was head of the Food Control Agency, and I'd like to speak to MIRA, because it may well be a future lawsuit by somebody, landowners around Sylvia, that want to preserve as much as possible of the Camp Coenea, and the MIRA law, as you may know, first of all, requires a citizen, and the law provides for standing, or individual, to allege that there would be pollution and pyramid of destruction of natural resources that is defined by the law to a material extent, and once the, that burden, the burden then, like, you know, achieving a stat, the preliminary standing, then the burden switches to, in this case, Kami, and they have to prove that there is no feasible and prudent alternative to their proposal, and as you may know, there was meant a second offer by the firemen, I see that one of the firemen makes here, and that one certainly would meet the definition of a feasible and prudent alternative, and this law is for judgment relief, not for damages, so if somebody out there in Lake Sylvia, or an interested party, anybody that wants to try to check the environment, in this case, the shoreline, and the big woods that are out there, can start the lawsuit, and go for an injunction, and equitable rates, they can't get damaged, no monetary damage. And my first concern, because I've been to Coenea, had my family there many years ago during the winter, is for the shoreline, the setback, the Sylvia property of Lake is only 75 feet, if Kami puts in large homes, six large homes, within 75 feet of Lake, there will be inevitably pollution of Lake Sylvia. Secondly, there are big woods out there, and we have very few remnants in the state of big woods, we have some at Near Strand, at Wolford, and out in Wayzata, I had a case out in Wayzata, where we stopped Providence Academy from chopping down the woods, and put in an academy there, right downtown Wayzata, so I'm very concerned that Kami will go in and chop down a portion of the big woods up above Bluff, and I've been out there recently, had a tour of Coenea, and I could see where it's going to be difficult to build up, because of the arch, Bluff looks like it's more than 25 feet, so, there's really two key environmental issues here, the waters of Sylvia Lake, and the big wood, and then I understand Kami wants to plant another building at Act 40, he's talking about building, of homes, and then he wants to tear down all those beautiful structures, the tiny room, chapel, searing accumulation, and basically, he is destroying one of the special platoons of Chicago, Minnesota. And so, I am opposed, I'm not speaking on behalf of the church, I'm no longer on the Board of Trustees, but I've been involved in the environmental scene since the 60s, and I have deep concern that if Kami goes forward here, there will be destruction and criminal pollution, and meet the criteria of, somebody could start a lawsuit under MIRA, and stop this, not, particularly, I don't understand why Wright County, and I've appeared before Wright County before, two, three cases, why would Wright County allow this developer to come in during the time when he doesn't have title, because if that happens, suppose if the whole thing falls apart, after you rezoned, if you rezoned- thing falls apart after you rezon, if you rezon, then the church would have to rezon it back. And I know the fees are in the thousands of dollars. And then, for the life of me, I cannot understand why you would want to rezon until Kami gets titled. And he probably won't get titled for a couple more months. So, I spoke to one of your staffers, apparently you plow that with me, but I certainly don't agree with it. He has planned this action until after the pandemic and after Kami gets titled, if he gets titled. So, those are the basic comments that I want to make. And what I'd like to hear from Kami, because this is a very difficult way to handle, because I can't understand who's talking, I can't understand what's being said. I wanted to hear what the lawyer for Kami had to say. I assume you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you fine.
All right, you have any questions for?
Is anybody here have any?
What was that gentleman's name?
What, what was your name again for the record?
Grant Merritt.
Hey, thank you.
I'm an attorney. I wasn't a attorney. I've retired when I was 85 years old. And now I volunteer working on environmental places without a, I'm a longtime member of Hennepin. I joined Hennepin Avenue by the service in 1962, right after I got out of law school. And then I practiced law until two years ago. And my last 35 years were in the environmental field. I've been accused of not knowing about real estate. I happen to own a real estate on the North Shore, back of the North Shore of Lake Superior. I've done a concentration easement. I know quite a bit about real estate law.
All right.
Certain others have said.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? Sean, do you have anyone else?
I have a Mr. Tom Gump.
Gump.
Yes, that Tom, my own Tom.
It's his turn.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tom Gump, and I'm the registered real estate broker along with Sam Thompson, representing the church in the sale of this property. And I appreciate my friend Grant Merritt being here today and respect all his years of experience. Now, just a few points that the church would like to make. First of all, there's no lawsuit that's been filed. We don't expect a lawsuit to be filed. There is a binding purchase agreement with buyer for consideration on both sides, earnest money paid. The church has voted twice to go forward with the sale. They're interested in selling the property now. They're interested in rezoning the property, even if the sale doesn't go through. They have other ways to serve their mission and need the funds from the sale to do that. We do not believe the woods would be significantly damaged. And obviously, you'll have a chance to review the plans before they go forward. We don't believe, and the church has been represented from with legal counsel all the way through, we don't believe that the second offer is valid, since the church had already accepted the previous offer. And that's all we have to think about. We're, we can take any questions. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Merritt, as well.
All right, thank you. Do we have anyone else from the public?
Let's see if we can have a little stuff.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Well, I'm going to hear from you, I remember.
All right, I'm going to go this way first.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a comment on a couple of letters that I read in the packet here. One person references that the county's putting money before preserving agricultural land. And just for clarification, is there any agricultural tillable land in that 29.5 acres?
Not, not that I've seen or looking at it. But the, the thing that we've discussed up here on this board a lot of times is agricultural land doesn't necessarily have to be tillable land. You know, woods, I mean, it's still agricultural land.
Okay.
We've had that discussion plenty of times amongst these members.
Okay. And, and the next thing is, in another letter, it's noted that the Board of Trustees approved the sale of the land for their own reasons, and that it was approved. As Grant mentioned, he was opposed. It wasn't unanimous, apparently, but that was their decision to put the land on the market. Nobody coerced them into that, and that's part of the reason why we're here today. So, I'm just pointing out what I read for everybody's benefit, that we, we do look at the written comment. And there was comments about docks. Do we get into docks? Is that an association deal as far as managing of docks? It's referenced in a couple of letters. And that there's an access potentially, it's going to be off of Turtle Bay. Is that anything in the proposal about that? Or do these, these lots that are proposed, it's up to them to manage whatever they can for an access without doing certain alterations to shoreline, I suppose?
Sean, do you want to take that, or?
I mean, what you're speaking to could be very lost trees, relying on public access, kind of going down the road of subdivision standards and priorities to a thumb the DNR would handle docks, private individual houses, not proposing access as an associate by other means.
Well, also, I think what we have to remember here is a board. We're here for a rezoning. You know, once it's rezoned, does it meet the criteria of riparian? We've had this plenty of times up here. We've had lake properties out in Northern Wright County where we, we've, you know, it's all agricultural, it's agriculture around it, but to split it up, it's riparian because it meets the criteria of enough lake frontage. You know, what happens with it after we rezone it, if it's getting split up, then we look at if, you know, where house placements and sewers and all that is proper. But before the board right here today is rezoning. And it's, in our land use plan, it's agricultural. It's not in the land use plan other than agriculture. So, criteria in our ordinance is if it's touching water, enough footage of it, can it be rezoned to get a building entitlement? I think that's what's before the board here today.
The ordinance language is especially suited.
Right.
So, obviously, they need to know frontage, but point is, it's not in the land use plan, anything by agriculture, any commission. As riparian, property is not, not developed.
And that's, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for clarifying for everybody, including the folks that took the time to send the letters so that they know we addressed it and clarified, and you established the focus and the scope of what we're doing here. Thank you.
And we, we've had this before on lakes. And I know, on the one lake that I know of in Northern Wright County, we actually didn't go along with it. But it was a small lake. It, it really couldn't handle a lot more than what it had. And here is a large lake, Lake Sylvia. It's highly developed. I mean, there's, there's things we have to, is it, is it suited? I mean, it's in our ordinance, we have to go through. Is it suited for rezoning under the ordinance? So, that's something we have to decide here. Janice?
Mr. Chair.
Go, go ahead, Pat.
Mr. Chair, on, on that front, Mr. Otto is probably anticipating this question from me. What I would like to hear from Mr. Otto is why this site in particular, and we'll talk about the next site next, but why this site in particular is one that you would consider especially suited to residential development?
Commissioner Mulver, thank you. Yeah, I was ready for that one. You know, and I think we've discussed this before. Every case is different. So, I think what factors into these, for me, at least when I look at them, is, is something that Commissioner Falger kind of alluded to earlier, is, well, what could be done later? What makes sense? How big a parcel are we doing? What's the layout of the land? What can the land really support without disrupting the land or disrupting the lake? In this case in particular, we've got 29 acres that touches a lake that is, you know, ag and the fact of that it's open space. But I looked at one home in there, and if it's a, yeah, these are going to be upper end homes. I mean, everything else around Lake Sylvia is. And, and just looking at that, so they have an acre, acre and a half building site down by the lake, and the rest of it's all going to remain as it is. I, I think that, in my opinion, this property would be especially suited for the one lot. I don't think it's specially suited for two or three or four lots, but I think for one lot, in my mind, I'm comfortable in asking for that on this parcel.
Thanks, Mr. Otto. Can you, can you confirm for me, as I look at the aerial, it would appear to me that we're not talking about lake frontage that's set up with a beach or things like that. What we're talking about is this, this sort of floating bog that we, that we see on some of the more natural environmental lakes. And I'm wondering how that plays into whether you see this property as especially suited for residential development?
Yeah, you are correct. Yes, this is not your sandy beach that you would see around a lot of the rest of the lake. But again, I think it comes back to the frontage. If you go over to the west property line, that actually has very little bog and frontage. So, and there is a trail that goes over there. So, there would be the opportunity to go over that. There's also the opportunity to just build your dock so that it floats across, or it doesn't float, but it, it goes over the cattails and out to the lake. There is a place for that. And it, to me, again, it comes down to the density that you're putting it in there. If, if it's a sandy beach, I think you can put more density. If it's not, then I think we have to look at, well, what makes sense for that? Does one dock on 500 and some feet of shoreline make sense? In this case, I, I think it does. It's very similar to what is right to the south of it, what's been, you know, kind of everything else in that bay. So, that would be my answer, I guess.
Thanks. My last one on this, Mr. Otto.
Yes.
Unlike a lot of the requests, which deal with natural environmental lakes that are in more rural areas of the county, here we have a general development classified lake. Could you help me, I don't know, help me think about how much of a positive that might be for your position?
Yeah, a lot, so a lot of the other lakes that we've looked at, you're correct. In, in, a lot of the lakes that I've brought forth to this board, and I know you've seen some others that have been on natural environment lakes, but most everything's been on a natural environment lake. Most of the stuff that I brought to this board has been larger parcels. It's been five acres, some of them even 10 acres on natural environment lakes. I am aware of a couple in Wright County that you allowed less than that on a natural environment lake. But to me, that natural environment lake starts to say, again, how does DNR classify a lake? They classify it by the number of homes on the lake and the use. They don't classify it, they partially classify it by the shoreline, but it's partially classified by how it got developed. So, the more homes already existing on the lake, when they came through and classified them, that actually helped to make your density higher on the lakes. So, if we look at Lake Sylvia and you look around there, a lot of this stuff was done in the 50s because it's a great lake. And so, you're comparing 500 feet of frontage to lots that have 50, 75, 100 feet of frontage. So, I, I think that helps me in this respect on this one in particular, because we're, we're really looking to kind of cap off the end of the lake here and say, we're going to put one lot in there until the county decides to change the rules. And that'll put this to bed.
Thanks, Mr. Otto. Thanks, Mr. Chair. I don't have anything else.
All right. Ken, did you have something?
Did you explain to Jan why?
Yeah, well, Ken was here earlier and I missed him.
Is that gentleman that spoke relative to this proceeding, the second gentleman, is he still online? I believe he was a real estate broker with, working with the church?
That was Tom?
Yes, this is Tom Gump. I'm still here.
I'm sorry, Tom what?
Uh, Tom Gump. Just think Forrest Hake and Forrest.
Oh, yeah. Okay, great. Good movie.
Tom Gump.
Well, Mr. Gump, you, you, did, did I hear you to state that the church would proceed to request rezoning should this particular application fail? Did I hear you say that?
That is our understanding. We haven't asked the question directly. However, over the years, there's been two different votes that have been taken in order to sell the property. The mission for this particular use is no longer the mission of the church. They want to focus on helping people in their general area. And so, they are interested in selling and selling now. There was a statement that said, maybe we could wait after the pandemic. The church believes that this is the time since the residential market is very attractive. There are many houses being sold. And the church feels that it'll be damaged if it doesn't, if it isn't able to sell the property now. And it intends to go forward with the sale, even if the current buyer backs out. We believe the church's value is enhanced by the rezoning, especially since they are moving forward with the sale of the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gump. Mr. Chair, I have one other question. There are multiple references to big woods. Anybody explain where they are? What's, what's comprising the big woods out on this particular par.
I'd like to ask a question. I can do that.
You'll have to wait right now. I have, uh-
Wait.
Mr. Falger has got the floor? I guess, is there anyone? Sean?
I have a question for Tom.
Not, not now, sir.
Just a second, Mr. Merritt, if you can hold on one second. Thank you. Ken, I'm-
Big Woods.
I'm, I'm assuming it's the wooded areas on there. There's a definition, the big woods, on what species make it up and how many species and how old.
The big woods, my, in my understanding, the big woods, Mr. Chair, is original Minnesota forest that has not been touched since.
You know where, you know where I live.
Yes.
On Eighth Street. That technique, I am surrounded by big woods. I am in big woods, even though my house has been built in it. The species of trees, the age of trees, the density of trees, that is considered an area of big woods.
Right now, has there been a study on this particular parcel where these big woods actually reside? Or can we just assume that anything that-
I'm going to assume they're in here, but other than, that's what they're called, there's not necessarily a, a standard or a requirement because of them.
No, I understand that, but I, I oftentimes hear in some comments that we're talking big woods here. What's big woods? I think I have an idea what it is, but does it actually reside on this particular parcel?
I have not had that formally inventoried or presented.
Jan, you want to work in on this?
Well, that was going to be my question to Mr. Otto. The big woods are, are protected as far as I know, as I believe that, that they are valued greatly by the majority of the people here in Minnesota, me being one of them, and that there has been no cultivation, no, no disruption of, of the woods themselves. And I'm a firm believer that we have spent so much time chopping down trees that we need to preserve some of that land, that's our heritage and what's left of, of the original big woods that was all over this part of the state. And, and it's like prairie land is hard to come by that's not been tampered with or, or proud. And I, I personally think that I, before we would proceed with anything like this, we should know where those big woods are and have it defined for us so that we would be taking into account the, the values of the state of Minnesota for establishing the big woods.
Chair, may I address? Uh, Jan, you said that they are protected, and if they are, by whom?
Well, they're, they're identified by the Department of Natural Resources, I think. And I didn't know that we were necessarily going to get into this today, but it's just one of those areas that are unclear to us. And I think before proceeding and moving forward, we should know those answers to the questions, because I'm just speaking to you of, of, of what I believe and what I've been told, but I don't see, I don't have personal knowledge of where it's written down that these are to be protected or valued. And so I would encourage the board to move cautiously when proceeding with doing anything that would, would, would hurt their chance for survival.
Thank you. Chair?
Mike?
And I, it might be just, if not for this case, for the future, for staff to look into it, maybe the historical society to have some info. But I've heard reference to this big woods in the past, that originally it was a swath of woods that was untouched, it wasn't logged, it went from the south part of the county to the north and possibly a, a spot on County 34 between here and St. Michael is still part of that. But it was more than just a reference to a generic woods that you call a big woods. It was because of, it was untouched by man, basically. And there may be a pattern that it cuts through the county that, I don't know about any special designation that says you can or can't do something in it, but I have heard the reference and that's the way I've heard it used before.
Well, the big woods started over by St. Croix River. And, and it traveled all the way to the, my house, I assume, was part of the big woods too, originally. It was before farming was, was, uh, was happy to here in our part of the state, but it, it extended from Shakopee, uh, down to almost La Sora, I think. And I don't, I don't have the references here on hand, but, but it was a huge swath of land. It wasn't just a particular part, but any parts that are left over now are, are to be looked at seriously before allowing construction and so on. So I think that as, as this board, we need to move cautiously so that we can protect the environmental health of our county. And, and I live in Southside Township too, and I don't know if this is appropriate for me to say, but I think I have a portion of the big woods on my property too, and I would just hate to see anything happen.
Anyone else that has any comment?
Mr. Chair.
Jan?
I guess, first of all, I looked at what the township response was on this and they're, they've been dealing with this in Southside Township for quite a few years. And they're confident, I believe, that this 29 acres is not going to be destroyed, they're not going to tear out the woods. They voted unanimously to approve this request. So, um, when it comes to the, this 29 acres of only one building site, I don't think that because of the topography of the land, we were able to see part of it when we walked along the road. We, we could look down into the, that low ground area. So, a good portion of that, you can see it up on there also on the map on the wall, but a good portion of this is not even going to be able to be touched. There's already a trail going through there. It's not a piece of property that's isolated and never touched. It doesn't meet that criteria in my mind. It does have the riparian part of it. Therefore, I would be in favor of recommending approval on this request.
Chair?
Ken?
Mr. Riley, do you have the ability to expand your aerial view? Weren't we on that parcel just to the west for some issue?
We did a site inspection of this property.
Okay.
When they split what was one or two lots, this property surrounded it. This was one of the big lots out of it. We parked on this road, went downhill, and we walked into the wooded area. It was a building site. So that's why you were on this parcel, was the site inspection.
And that was a rezoning issue?
When that property got rezoned, R2A.
R2A.
And, and at that time, Sean, when we rezoned that, was that in the land use plan for agricultural also, going underneath the?
Correct.
Underneath the riparian?
It was in the land use plan as agriculture.
Okay. Mr. Chair? Mr. Riley, your statement just brought up another question I have then. Getting back to the subject parcel here today, under today's standards, under the AR, proposed AR designation, there could be no further splits because of the length of the shoreline?
There could be no further riparian splits. For, for full disclosure, the, the, the property is 29 acres and has road frontage. Once it's zoned AR, would somebody try to propose a non-riparian lot? And then the planning commission have to deal with the issue that they approved this based on riparian, that previously was not in the land use plan for development? We are not going to allow further subdivision of the property. So it would not meet our current standards and land use plan for doing a second lot because of the riparian.
Mr. Chair?
Ken?
I'd like to continue my question, if I could, Mr. Riley. My question is, let's say this AR proposal succeeds here today, it's passed, goes on to the county board. Can that individual then come back and say, I would like to request a five acre lot, like R2A, uh, R2A zoning? Is that, would that fit in terms of the lake shore length standard?
Uh, not under R2A. They might be able to ask for a, a R2 and R1 that would, that would fit, but that's going to be a challenge because of how the road frontage lays out. A lot would get bigger and then the riparian then should be bigger. So it, it would be a challenge at best to do another riparian lot without building a road. Building a road is unlikely.
What possible?
The road?
Yeah.
Well, probably not going to do that for one lot and it's got the wetland. I would assume that's not taking place.
Yeah, what I'm saying, Mr. Riley, is that, okay, let's say AR passes, can they then come and say, well, I would like to go R2A?
They could ask for that now, if it fit.
And it doesn't fit?
It doesn't fit.
Because of?
Because of the dimensional standards.
Along the lake shore?
Correct, for riparian lots.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, a couple, a couple of little things, thank you.
Paul?
So, on that note, just keeping in mind, anything riparian would be back in front of this board. Obviously, if this was approved, you would have all of this discussion and you would be approved this for a reason. This board would have the say over any of that. And frankly, I would think they would have, you know, quite a bit of, to go against doing that again. Like I say, I, I think you look at these as what makes sense for it and, unless they bought some land from the neighbor, I don't think two lots make sense. I certainly don't think you build a road. As far as, getting back to Commissioner Thompson's comment about the, um, big woods, I, I don't, I don't know anything about big woods, other than a few areas that I've worked in that have been concerned with that. They would have a separate ordinance dealing with tree removal and everything else to that effect. And to my knowledge, Wright County doesn't have anything like that in their ordinance. If this was, if I owned this parcel, had a building entitlement, I could build wherever I saw fit, depending on whatever the wood, ever sold. You have a provision for prime ag land.
Well, we, we do have tree removal standards now where the house is picked. That's not so much an issue.
My, my comment, though, is it's not related to a big woods.
That's correct. So it doesn't even have to be a big woods to meet, to meet that standard and that concern.
But there's not a. Most cities would have a tree replacement plan.
And, and we do have, we do have certain language. It might be outdated, but we do have language. But the planning commission is able to put conditions on approvals, whether it's big woods or not. We don't have to say you can't disturb this wetland because there's a law on it. I, is there a law on not cutting down a big woods tree? I, I'd have to do research on that. Could the planning commission say, you, you're representing that the building site's going to go here? Substantial tree removal beyond driveway, building site, septic site, and outbuildings cannot be done? That's up to the planning commission.
Okay.
Mr. Chair? I'd like to move, make a motion.
Okay. Go ahead, Ken.
I would like this board to move for approval of the rezoning to the county board of commissioners from AG Ag, General Agricultural and S2 Residential, Recreational Shorelands to AR Agricultural, Residential and S2, because the board feels it meets the criteria laid out in the land use plan. Also subject to minimal tree removal around the home and driveway and septic. That fit what you might be looking for?
Well, I wasn't necessarily looking for it. I was offering.
No, but I'm, I'm agreeing with.
Right, so if you are agreeing, let's make sure it's, it's clear. I think, I think what you're saying is beyond the normal tree removal for development, rest of the lot, the rest of the property should not have a substantial clear cutting big ways.
Words to those effect.
Okay. I have, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion. I need a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Jan?
Um, I, I think, uh, I do ask Mr. Merritt to, to hold off with this question until, and we haven't gone back to him to give him a chance to speak.
But I've already heard him for approximately 10 minutes and it was, as chair, it was my choice on this subject to keep moving up here. So, we have another subject that he'll potentially speak on. I think up here on the board right now for discussion, I think we're here for a rezoning and I don't think it's our, our total responsibility to debate whether it's a big woods definition or not a big woods definition. I guess I would get really nervous about doing that. I too own property and I've got huge trees in it. And now you're going to tell me that it's a big woods and I can't do anything or I can't cut a tree down in it? I'd be really scared with that and to, for this board up here to be sitting here making those definitions without the proper thing. And that's why we have county parks, we have state parks. If there's areas that people want to protect, then the counties and the states and the federal government protect them. Otherwise, the rest of us here are private landowners, paying taxes for the county, for police, for schools, for all of that. And now if you're going to put, start putting designations, this board putting designations as big woods, that's not necessarily in our ordinance. Our ordinance is saying it fits with riparian, it's meeting the lake frontage or the water frontage, it's meeting the lot sizes. We're meeting a lot of what our ordinance is saying. And I haven't seen in our ordinance where the big woods is in there saying if there's a big woods or a big tree in it, we can't do it. So we got to be very careful as to what line and where we're going down. We're here for recommending rezoning to the county board. And on this particular piece of property, it is meeting the criteria for riparian. It is meeting the lot sizes. It does have a building site that meets. The property adjacent to it, I think we've not set a precedence, but we did rezon that because of riparian for lots. So, for this particular piece here, I think it, it meets what the motion is, is for.
So. I call the question, Mr. Chair.
All right. We have a call the question, a vote.
But we didn't have discussion.
He called the question. Once you call the question, it's over. So, we'll vote, roll call.
Ram Darai.
Bellgerai.
Catch more guy.
Thompson, I'm going abstained.
Pat?
Malberg, no.
Mal, votes aye. Motion carries, ordered two, but it's show that Thompson abstained and Malberg was no. We'll move on to number four, which is also Kami Holdings. When you're ready, Sean?
Yes, Mr. Chair, planning commission, the property is zoned agriculture. The land use plan is agriculture. At the site inspection, you saw this is the part of the property that contains all the church buildings, the caretaker's house and all the improvements. Request is to rezone to R2A, which is minimum five acre lots. And if that is approved, to request the planning commission to establish a standard PUD that allows for the underlying zoning district, R2A, to determine the number of lots, not bonus lots like an AR PUD, not to get more lots and cluster them, but the underlying zoning district to determine the number of lots. And because of, if it's approved as a PUD, to be able to vary the standards of the R2A zoning district and have a feature such as the outlot that would need to be owned by a homeowners association. So the site plan, what, what that all means is the site plan is representing, they are doing a density allowed by R2A zoning, minimum five acre lots and 300 feet on the lake. They're, they're achieving that density or they're not going over that density. If that's approved, they are also requesting a standard PUD so they can vary on some of the dimensional standards and sizes. Have an outlot. There would be a leftover ag zone that would essentially have the, the entitlement on the property. The standard PUD allows for more than one underlying zoning district. So it could have the R2A underlying and agriculture underlying. The one, two, three, four, five, six lots would meet the density allowed for that much land. And the one ag lot would meet the density allowed for essentially the one entitlement that would be on the property under ag zoning.
Okay.
So the first question to start with is the riparian and is it suitable for residential R2A zoning?
Right. Do you want to add anything to that? Paul?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I think Sean did as well as we could on this one. It's, it's kind of convoluted, but I think his recommendation of starting with the rezoning part is good and then we can get into the other part.
Could you move your mic closer to your face?
Yeah, sorry. All right. And so, one of the things to, that I just want to make sure that's clear in this is that we have a, a smaller parcel on the southeast corner of the property that we are actually bringing into the plat and we're giving them some property. So making that lot a little bit bigger, so some of his improvements are within, within his lot, basically. And, um, so, not to make that confusion, but that's what that parcel is, why that parcel's in the plat. And so it, it just, I just want to bring that up right off the bat. And then as far as the, um, buildings on the site, the buildings will all be removed. What I envision, now I say I envision because there's, you know, this board knows that as long as the rules are met, they can build where they want. I envision on the Westerly Lot, Lot One, that the home would be somewhere in between the existing building and the shed area. We have to check out some bluff issues out here, but it appears that Lot One is not a bluff. There are bluffs on Two through- There are bluffs on Two through Six, I believe, or close to. And the reason why we're asking for the PUD is to allow us to have more room up on top of the hill to build. So these lots are long and narrow. But the reason is, is we're trying to get the homes up on top of the hill where they have room. It's out in the field. We would leave the trees and whatnot alone. If you visited the site, you saw the shoreline, you saw what the camp has done out there. They've really made a nice area. So I think in my mind and trying to answer the question of especially suited for lake shore development, this shoreline is a lot different than the other shoreline that we just talked about. This shoreline, in my opinion, can handle more density. It's already been used as recreational use through the camp. I don't know how many people they had in there or whatnot, but obviously they used it for that. There is no boat access. There is no shared dock. There is no, none of that is proposed in this. It is strictly six lots with an outlot on the back to preserve that switchgrass field and to preserve the woods that's along the edge as a common space. So I'll answer any questions or try to. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean, do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak on this?
I don't have a hand up, but I don't know if they fully understand we're opening it to public comment.
Okay, if a hand comes up, let me know and we'll go to it. All right, is there any discussion here among the board?
Mr. Chair?
Dan?
I guess I have a question for Mr. Otto. That lot furthest to the west, there are two, it looks like there are two lots to west of that property line that currently do not have lake shore. Do you see what I'm talking about?
Yes, I do.
Is there any intention of the property owners to sell any of that off?
I guess I'd have to defer to my client on that. I'm not aware.
Yeah, excuse me. We haven't had that discussion yet. I know that there's been some interest from the adjoining property owners kind of running all the way down that finger. But we need to get through this process before we can advance any kind of discussion.
Thank you. And my question then for you, Sean, is if that were to happen, does that lot still have adequate shoreline? It looks like it does.
The lot, this plant, with or without it?
With or without it?
Well, it likely would and as a standard PUD.
Yep.
You could vary the standard. My concern is, and I've tried my best to warn everybody upfront, before doing this is probably the best time to address splitting anything off first. Once this is platted and it's platted this way, it could be difficult at best to come back, because it's a different plan. It could be quite cumbersome to try to figure that out.
You mean once, if this were to be all rezoned? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, rezoned and platted in this manner, that that lot.
I get the platted part.
Is that lot. In theory, if that was not there, that wouldn't necessarily now make this lot nonconforming.
So I'm trying to work through this process here because the rezoning part of it wouldn't necessarily affect that. It's the plating part of it that would affect it, right?
Well.
I'm just trying to figure out.
Kind of both, because once you rezone it, it has subdivision standards. But in this case, one is leading to the next. I mean, it's a PUD, so they're proposing this plat or will be. So once that lot is stamped like that configuration, it's very difficult to break pieces off of it, especially when you're throwing in another property that's platted. Ideally, you would go through perhaps a board of adjustment process.
Up for lot line adjustments?
Or redo a plat, or redo the plat next to it first. And have that sucked into that plat. And then just plat the remainder. Plated off first and then try to take something off of a plat that's just platted, tie it to a plat. But that's what's been presented and laid out. If they can't, if that doesn't take place, we'll be left with the approved plat.
I just bring that up because I see those two lots there. This would be a natural thing to try to get that.
And either way, they're not.
Lake shore onto those two lots.
And either way, they're not lots. They either have to be, or right now, they're this one big. They're contained to the ag property. If planted this way, it's part of that property.
Yep. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Paul?
On that, just to kind of talk through that too. We discussed that. I didn't know where we were in discussions with neighbors. But, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on with this. And so to bring in another neighbor and have to plant that piece of property as well. And we didn't, I don't think Sean and I brainstormed on, is there a mechanism to just create an outlot in this plat and do it? But I don't believe that there is. So that's why we don't really have an answer on that because we've got to deal with two more property owners. And we're already dealing with some of the people of the church. So, you know, we're kind of, and we're dealing with the neighbor on the other side. So we kind of, it's starting to get bigger and bigger. And, you know, where's the ball going to end up? And we want to try to pinpoint, you know, what my clients want. And so if there's an easier way to do it, we're certainly in favor of that and working through the process. But at this point, that's kind of where we landed.
Okay. I didn't mean to complicate this too much, but I just, you know. You start thinking like other people sometimes and you wonder what's going to happen in the future. But, and I just wanted to make sure that everything was going to work good in the process. And I do respect the fact of church deciding to do something, you know. Been there several times, been chairman of the church before. And when it comes to decisions that are made on the board, everything's legal. And once that's done, that's the way it is for the board regardless of who disagrees with it. So I do respect the church and their decision to do this. Thank you. That's all I had.
Any other comments here?
I just want to make this. Nothing to do with this plat.
you're considering the rezoning to R2A and the density allowed by that zoning and the request to establish a standard plan unit development looking at this preliminary concept plan, the narrative that they've presented as that standard planned unit development. Now that still has to get a preliminary plat and be in front of you. So if you want to talk about wherever the bluff is, all the houses need to be north of the trees or don't cut down the trees from the shoreline and 200 feet back, you would be dealing with that at that stage, at the preliminary plat stage.
So that would be at another meeting who would be dealing with that?
Correct.
But today it's just.
Well, you can bring up or discuss any concern you have, but that wouldn't be necessarily the condition or requirement of the rezon.
If you have thoughts, you can, like Sean says, bring it up now to put the applicants on notice when they do start plating it and setting things out, some of the things that the board may require if it is rezoned.
Well, I already had asked the question if Kami Holdings owned the lot across the way. And the answer was no. They're working on it. And the same would be true for this area too that we're talking about rezoning now. You don't really own it yet. You have a purchase agreement. That's all.
Mr. Chair, before we forget, I suggest we formally go to the public too.
Yeah, I did. I asked if you had anybody on.
But can I ask just to make.
Yes, you can.
So for the public, we're formally asking if there's any more comments at this time for the Kami Holdings request. I know we had a few people online. And if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this request. Mr. Gump?
Thank you so much for your time. I would like to take up a lot of it. I just want you to know that churches have the opinion that retreat centers are very difficult to operate nowadays. And they do ever foresee being able to be used in property at its structure now. And also the proposed development is going to be a lot less instantly. And there are actually fewer buildings around it now. So it actually would be better for the community after it's built. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do you have anybody else, Sean?
I don't believe anybody else wants to speak at this time.
Okay. Pat, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do not.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other comments here?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to address Mr. Otto if I may. Is it my understanding, Mr. Otto, that you and Mr. Riley had kind of touched upon the issue of those two or three parcels to the west possibly gaining some measure of property here? Did you consider, for example, making outlots of what might be considered the extensions eastward of those lot lines of those properties to the west?
Yes, Mr. Felger. We did consider that. But I don't believe that that can be done with the zoning code the way that it is. We have to take a whole lot. We can't create these little parcels. I think the issue is that they could go tax forfeit, albeit it's lake shore, but.
Well, they'd be landlocked too. Yeah, we weren't able to, the main issue was the land.
Okay, so they got to meet some standards. Okay, I get you. Unless they were to join into the plat.
Right.
One big happy neighborhood.
So one scenario in my mind is that, well, either my client or whoever buys this lot, they could turn around and talk to the neighbors and they could join a new plat and come back in and replat or lot line adjustment, if you will, but essentially it'd be a plat.
All right, thank you. One other question if I may, Mr. Chair. Now, Mr. Otto, you were explaining that more than likely the building sites would be further up to the north into the clearer areas. But they're not necessarily held to that. Have you done soil borings and such throughout the full extent of this property in terms of where potential building sites may be?
We have not. This is all based upon office work. So after this, if this gets approved, we would do that for the preliminary plat for the next step.
Okay, in your understanding of setbacks, where, let's say, all these properties wanted to build as close to the shoreline as possible, where would that occur? Provided there's adequate septic, et cetera.
So it would vary on each lot. The bluff will come into play. So Lot One, that one, we have to do a field check of that, but I do not believe that Lot One has a bluff on it. So that setback would be 75 feet. Lot Two does have a bluff. It's further back. But I envision Lot Two has a bigger area up top. I envision Lot Two to be up top of the hill, so outside the tree line, if you will.
But nothing's requiring him to be up there.
Unless there is a bluff. And Sean and I had discussed that some too, but we need to do, we need to figure out exactly where that falls on here to assess that.
So in other words, there's a potential for homes to be much closer to the lake as opposed to being way further up north on some of the lots, perhaps?
To be fair, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there, Sean, with what we're asking for with rezoning, and maybe that's what Ken was trying to get at too, if we weren't doing anything with that lot in the back that doesn't touch the lake, the only reason for that is because of the PUD? I mean, in the rezoning, and we weren't adding a lot on the northwest corner, what would that rezoning be if that wasn't included? If you just had a road in there, the lot line ran all the way straight to the back through the road? I mean, is the underlying in doing the PUD another way to gain that lot back there? Is that the way I'm understanding it?
It would probably mean you have one less lake shore lot. Not only would you have probably not this back corner lot, unless you figured out a way to split off the entitlement first and then have the lots go all the way back.
Yeah.
You still need the road, of course. But it would probably mean one less riparian lot so you can meet the standards because it wasn't a PUD. But you just met the standards of the zoning district.
Mr. Chair, if I could. So just the lot in the northwest corner is technically an ag split. So that could be done. You could do an ag split, leave the rest of the property restricted. So that's how we're getting the northwest corner. It doesn't have to do anything with the zoning. We could do that today. And then the rest of it, the biggest reason for the PUD, and to be honest with you, the frontage is three feet shy of 200 feet on every one of these lots. So we would ask for a PUD. If you went straight zoning, we're three feet short. So we would try to find some property. But the biggest thing for the PUD is because we're giving that Lot Seven about 19 feet. So we're, if you look at our lots, one of our lots is 176 feet wide. The rest are all 200 at the lake. But the one is 176. And that's the shortage of his 19 feet or whatever it is in difference. So that, just to be in all clear honesty, what's going on here is that's what's going on. Is we're, just the configuration of how the lines come together. They're not parallel and it's not exactly 1,200 feet wide. It's 1,197.
And you also have the existing small one.
Right, that's kind of pulled out of this.
That's part of the plat. You want to be able to do that.
Right, well, we would just not negotiate with him and we wouldn't give him anything.
Well, I know, but that's part of the plat. And then the outlot. And as far as this ag piece, I mean, you could debate what we're calling it. But my opinion is it's being reviewed and allowed by the Planning Commission as part of the plat subdivision. So the way to split it out beforehand that you could do today is to have already done it. I don't think it really makes a difference, but it's still being reviewed by the Planning Commission.
Correct. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Jess, did you have something? Were your question answered or?
Well, I do have a question about the zoning. Right now, it's ag. I'm familiar with the area up there. It's just about a mile and a half away from my house. And I know that it's very, very rich in gravel. And that's primary there at that north and that outlot A. And when it's rezoned to the residential, that will eliminate then the possibility of any gravel, gravel being taken, taking place on this outlot A, right?
Correct. Under this process and that zoning, you would not have gravel mining as a conditional use.
Is there any other comments here or somebody willing to try to?
Go ahead, Ken. I know we're not even anywhere near any sort of subdivision phase here yet, Mr. Otto. But is that on pilger, is that an easement or is that fee ownership of the road by the public?
Pilger is an easement as it exists now. Will be dedicating to the township. We'll be dedicating to the township of the road.
You'll be dedicating to the township and the configuration that we see on this proposed plat?
We are proposing to dedicate to them what they currently have in town road organs, and that is depicted here. Your point might be, should we discuss with them and curve that corner?
My point.
Gotcha. Good idea.
Particularly for the reason that that will allow any home built on Lot 1 to be even further north without any encroachment upon a road setback, for example.
Yep.
Just a thought.
No, that's a good point. I didn't catch that one yet.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions or discussion here? If not, does somebody want to take a stab at a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion.
Ken?
I'd like to make a motion for approval, the rezoning of approximately 45 acres does not include the 3.3 acre ag lot to the County Board of Commissioners from Ag, General Ag, Reculture, and S2 Residential Recreation of Shorelines to R2A Suburban Residential and S2, because the board feels it meets the criteria laid out in the land use plan, and the shoreline is especially suited for development.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Ken?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Bravender, would you consider taking any consideration into minimizing tree removal?
Commissioner Falger, I feel like that's going to be addressed at the plating process, you know, when we come to the plat, that's when we can address that part of it, so hopefully I'll be here with them.
Very well, thank you.
Okay.
Great, is there any other discussion? There's no other discussion, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Bravender, aye.
Falger, aye.
Catch, Mark, aye.
Thompson, aye.
Malmberg, aye.
Mall, aye. Motion passes. Now, do we need to make any additional motions?
If you want to establish, if you need, yes, if you're going to make a motion to establish a standard planned unit development, you do, and it's suggested.
Oh, anybody?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair, for approval of the rezoning to the County Board of Commissioners to establish a standard planned unit development district, because it meets the criteria laid out in Section 155.059 of the Wright County Code of Ordinances.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just want to make sure that we understand exactly what I'm voting on here. We are saying now that we are going to allow the applicant to proceed with drawing up the plat, prepare for a presentation to us for approval of this flat plan.
Of the planned unit development.
Yes, of the planned unit development. The only question that I have about this is, what will happen if, if something happens with their plan to move forward now that we've agreed to have the zoning rechange to the, to the residential? Still, and since these people don't own the land itself, what implication would this have for the church then?
Mr. Chair, can I address that?
Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah. Do you remember when Mr. Gump testified earlier, he said that if Kami doesn't buy it and that deal falls through, they still want to go ahead with what this is, what the plan is?
Okay.
And I remember that, I had written that down from the testimony before. I had written that down from the testimony of Tom Gump before, when we were dealing with the other property. Does that make sense? Okay, thanks.
Is there any other discussion? If not, we'll proceed with the roll call vote.
Bravender, aye.
Falger, aye.
Catch, Mark, aye.
Thompson, no.
Malmberg?
Malmberg, aye.
Mall, aye. Motion carries, let the show that Thompson voted, no.
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to make a recommendation, continuing the condition used portion of this request for subdivision until May, until at least May 13, 2021, to obtain rezoning approval from the County Board, and to obtain survey work on soil borings consistent with the preliminary plat.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Motion made and seconded. My question would be, though, for the applicant, is that enough time to get that done?
Mr. Chair, no, we won't make May 15 with what we have to do, so we'll, at a minimum, be June, so...
Okay, what's that date?
June 3rd?
June 3rd?
Yes, that's right. The only time, though, is in June.
Will that work for you?
Yep.
July 1st.
Or there'll be a discount.
The secondaire approves.
I'll change that motion, Mr. Chair, to July 3, or June.
He's giving me one time.
No, 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 June 3rd's fine.
June 3rd.
Okay, all right. So, continuing until the June 3 meeting. Is there any other discussion? There's no other discussion, proceed with the roll call vote, please.
Bravender, aye.
Falger, aye.
Catch, Mark, aye.
Alpex.
Malmberg?
Aye.
Mall, aye. Motion carries, Thompson abstained.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And we will take a five-minute chairman's break. Trust me, I won't let you forget. Trust me, I'm not letting you out the door. Because I completely out, because I put that handpiece on my... I haven't sent you...
And number five is Michael Lacy, is he on the web?
Hi, I'm covering for Mike Lacy here, my name is Roman Olschansky, so if there are any questions, feel free to ask, sorry for interrupting there.
I think his last name.
What was your last name, sir?
Roman Olschansky, O-L-S as in Sam, H-A-N-S as in Sam, K-Y, Roman Olschansky.
Okay Sean, whenever you're ready.
And sorry.
Is there anything the applicant wants to add to that?
Just wondering if there is the most recent drawing, I don't, I can't put it up here, but there was another drawing that we had our architect submit, just so that you could see what it would look like. And the Marysville Township approved it when I went to that meeting two, three weeks ago. So that's the only thing I'd like to add.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody here, or Sean, do we have anybody from the public on?
Is there anybody from the public on concerning the Lacy request for the Blue Man House? I think it's sort of, what I think he was referring to was drawing the regular, the house will be used by the architect. And then our photos. Okay, this do happen.
Yep. Okay.
So one of the questions the planning commission probably has is tiny to this project. Do I have a question?
Absolutely, Mike Lacy's family and my family will use it together. And so as soon as possible, as soon as it's approved, we plan on closing by May 1st. So ideally, you know, early May. The current property, it currently sits, the house on Lake Minnetonka, and that property has been approved for construction as well. So they, you know, would like for me to remove the house. So it would help, you know, both the person that bought the current property, and it would help us if we were able to do this sooner rather than later.
By the end of this construction season, obviously.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, is there any, any more questions from the board here?
Mr. Chair, I was at the Marysville Township meeting and they didn't have any problems. They approved the request.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments here from the board? Sean, is there adequate setbacks for everything, what they're, according to their plan, it looks that way, but everything looks like there's adequate sewer, water, everything is?
Not a lot of optional sites.
All right, thank you. Any other questions here? If not, does somebody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
To approve a conditional use permit to relocate a dwelling in accord is a description provided by the applicant on record with the following conditions. Number one, that the house may not be occupied until approved by the building inspector. Number two, building permits are obtained for the new home. Number three, all septic requirements are met prior to the certificate of occupancy being issued. And number four, project completion date must be no later than 12/1/2021. Does that work for him?
That would absolutely work, thank you.
Okay, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, is there any other discussion? There's no other discussion, we'll proceed with the roll call vote, we'll start down with Janice.
I'll vote yes.
Catchmark votes aye.
Almberg?
Aye.
Bell, aye.
Ravender, aye.
Ball, aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much, have a great day, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to number six, Michael Ludinia. Think he's here.
I'll watch and pick her off, don't worry.
Can you give your name for the record, please?
Uh, Mike Ludinia.
All right, Sean, when you're ready.
The property township is, the land use plan is a culture. We have had a site inspection at this property, but there are the gravel pit area, gravel pit being added. Despite the nature of, also small scale, local, local fan, our request is to amend this. Uh, the recycling, uh, probably, I create blacktop, but.
Okay, um, let's see, I guess I'll still up there and just point out.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mike.
Right here, the main entrance is off County Road 8, it goes through the yard, that's the only entrance and exit to the pit. We, as you can see right here, when this photo was taken, we still had some concrete yet to crush, and that's piled here, and then our blacktop is piled here, and this is a, that's, here's a pile of crushed blacktop already, and here's a pile of crushed concrete. What's happening now, since this photo was taken, the blacktop is still piled here, the concrete is here, but now I've changed crushing operators, so now he's got a lot larger crusher. So the blacktop will still go up here, he sets his crusher here, piles it here, and then we're going to stockpile down here. This area is all open here now, so we'll stockpile our concrete down here, and we are going to crush some rock also, straight rock, and that will also be piled down there. It takes about, oh, we put up about 20,000 yards a year. We're at the stage right now that everything that comes in, we mark it the same year. We don't hold any over. We're pretty particular, what we take, it's, we, like we tell our contractors, we're not a garbage dump. We check the loads, we can't, iron's all right, we can't have plastics, wood, or anything like that. It just, it screws the product up and plus the crusher hates it. It can't, it floods the screens and that, so, uh, see, what else can I tell you? Yeah, and we mark it all of it ourselves, like I said, this is just a private pit, it's, right now it's myself and my son. We don't let anybody else in the pit, I hire my own crushers, we have our contractors we sell to, and that, and some public too, will come in and get, you know, with trailers, small trailers and that. But like I said, it's about 20,000 yards a year that we move, depending on how much comes in. It's just like, now unfortunate, I've got a crusher now that he can crush everything we have. Before, we had a larger amount, and it was a smaller operator that I had, that he just, he couldn't be there that long. He was there three weeks, well this operational, in a week, he's gone. So, um, go ahead and, I, questions if there's something you want to know about, or, I don't?
Sean, do we have anybody from the public online?
Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak?
Did you want to, you're, you want to speak? No? Okay, I didn't know. All right, we'll bring it back up here, is there any, Mike?
Mr. Chair, two things, on the application for planning commission, gravel pit worksheet number five asks, what are the proposed hours of operation, and that's blank.
Um, about during a week, it's like seven to seven, that's when the crusher's in there, that's.
Monday through?
Friday. I'm not liking working Saturdays, so.
Just asking.
Like I said, no, as far, like with the crushing operation, no. There's, it's seven to seven, and that's it.
And then number 15, it talks about reclamation, and it asks, what will be the end use of the property?
Um, in the plan, it will be a pond, a lake.
And then for the record, you're, it's asking for a five-year permit, and I'm just wondering what the thought process is on these pits as far as who gets five, who gets one, two, three? How is that determined? Maybe that's for Sean.
So Mr. Chair, planning commission, I think I talked to you about this one, Mike, earlier, and the five years is what the township currently reviews the operation on. So every five years, Mike goes back to the township, not the county, to review with the township. So I'm not necessarily seeing the township, or us at this time, wanting to designate five years at our level. We can if we choose to, but the five years was the formal review by the township.
And that's what I'm wondering, is at the county level, what's our criteria on designating?
So, as mining's taken place over the decades, we don't necessarily have it by ordinance, how long they will last. Many of our older permits that were granted many years ago did not have a deadline. We started to get more into 10 to 15, 20-year range, and then having to extend them if the operation wasn't done. What we, what we tend to review on a yearly basis are the hot mix plans, or the special uses, the overnight hauling. Specific projects, right? So, so our policy up to this point has been, when you're amending an old permit, and that original permit did not necessarily have a timeframe, not putting a new timeframe on it, but the planning commission can go down that direction if they decide to.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah?
Just to get my bearings, Mr. Chair, I think I know where I'm at. The Nuttaborn Fifth is east of that T intersection, half a mile or something?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so this is the farm that you come up to and see at the stop sign?
Correct, correct.
Was it 106?
County Road 8 coming off of County Road 37. Intersection at 37 and County Road 8.
Gotcha, okay.
39.
I know where you are.
39. Going two numbers off.
37.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments here? Well, I think just, before we get into it, just, that's out there in my area, and I guess I would like in the motion that it would go for five years on this situation, because it is a private pit out there. It's an area for private contractors to get rid of concrete, entire driveways, and it serves a purpose out there. And it's one of the private pits, per se, in the community yet, you know, because the large companies aren't allowing it in. So, I guess, I don't know how you're going to make your motion, but I would like to be able to see it continue for, you know, for a five-year review, just for the nature of the pit that we're looking at. It's not asking for asphalt plans, it's not asking for large mining projects or anything like that. Any other discussion, or Janice, you want a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve an amendment to the original conditional use permit to allow stockpiling and recycling of asphalt and concrete materials, and occasional crushing. Maximum number of days per year could be added, but at this point, I'm not going to add any days to that. All waste or refuse dumped on the site shall be properly disposed of in a timely manner.
Great, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Sean?
Was, was the five years relevant to any other thing but the township reviews it on a five-year basis?
Correct. So Janice, you didn't want to add that into your motion, do you want us to have a five-year review?
I'll, I'll agree to that, as long as the township is requesting, is it necessary that I add that?
Not necessarily, I just wanted to clarify anything with reviews had to do at the township level, that's fine. The township will be reviewing this.
What?
The township will be reviewing this, correct?
Well, you can come back here to us two in five years, that's fine. But it, it isn't, it isn't that important to me.
You don't want it in there, then?
I don't want it in there.
Okay, thank you.
One clarification, then, if we have a second, is there any other discussion or question? If not, we'll have a roll call vote, start with Dan.
Ravender, aye. Bell, aye. Catchmark, aye.
Aye.
Almberg?
Almberg, aye.
Ball, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We'll move on to number seven, Justin Dooley.
Good afternoon, board.
You want to give your name, please, for the record?
Yes, Justin Dooley with Fountain Hill Winery.
Okay, thank you. Sean, when you're ready.
Justin, we might as well start at the end, with what we were discussing.
Yes.
The planning commission knows where this property is, they did the site inspection, and approved an amendment to the existing CUP. Mr. Dooley just informed me that because of the business plan, at this time, he's not planning on building the outbuilding anymore.
I, I don't want to take that option away, I just.
And I'm not saying it is.
Oh, okay.
So at this time, it's approved to do that. And we usually have a timeframe of six months to 12 months to conduct that activity. It wasn't technically waived by the planning commission last time, I don't think. This request was to put the pizza oven in that new building. It's sounding like now it's going down the path of actually remodeling and doing any new square footage to the existing building, which is out here by.
Right there, uh, one more over, but, yeah, somewhere right there, yeah.
Well, you were, you were going to do the building over here.
Correct.
About 2,400 square feet.
Yes, that sounds right.
And have that for the events.
Just, just a larger tasting room.
A little larger tasting room.
Yep.
And have the pizza oven.
In there.
Now, it sounds like the plan is to potentially remodel the existing building and make it larger.
And the lumber and steel prices have since, probably about doubled in the past three, four months, and my initial proposal went from X to an additional, it increased about 40% from my initial proposal. And at this time, I don't see it in the cards to put an additional building on the site. So our thought is, is to expand the tasting, tasting room right now that is currently 1,300 square feet, 1,300 square feet, and, and expand it to the, east, towards the pavilion. We would hit the pavilion, and then there would be like some porch patio walking out into the pavilion. So it would probably add an additional thousand square feet. Um, and then the, and, you know, with, with that being said, the current tasting room, tasting room would be completely remodeled. I mean, like gutted, gutted. We're even thinking about going as far as taking out the, the ceiling and making the top all exposed, you know, if it's, if it's insulated, of course, but, and, you know, with that pizza oven, my initial plan with that pizza oven, of course, was to have it in the trailer. We went through our first winter with it, and the electrical, electrical costs are through the roof trying to heat that trailer in the, in the winter months. I was told by the manufacturer that it was double insulated, and it wouldn't have any problems. Well, the pipes burst below the trailer, and we're just having a lot of issues with it. And my thinking is to put the oven inside, we wouldn't obviously have those issues. With that being said, I, I am, I'm aware that my current CUP only allows for catered food with limited food production, food prep preparation. And I guess my ask here today is to move that oven inside the building, and to do what I'm already doing, because the trailer does not leave the site at all. I mean, it's, it's there 100% of the time, anytime that we were open. And, yeah, it would go in the, the oven would go in the newly remodeled portion of it. So again, the current tasting room would be completely gutted and remodeled. Now, I have to run that by architect, architect, but that's the plan.
So, so Mr. Chair, a couple ideas. What he describes would obviously require an amended CUP under normal circumstances. I really don't like getting into the business, well, they approved 2,000 over there separate. Now can you just attach it, and what is, I, I don't know what the plans are. So maybe you discuss the pizza oven, is that limited food preparation? And, and we just table this, maybe dismiss it, and I don't charge Mr. Dooley two. And, and we just table this, maybe dismiss it, and I don't charge Mr. Dooley two fifty again. I charge fifty dollars for a new notice in eight months, when he has all the new plans on the remodeling and the new building and where the pizza oven will go, and, and, and comes back, gets that reviewed and...
And I, you know, and I just don't know what's gonna happen to the building prices, and talking with a couple contractors, a lot of them are saying that it's gonna continue to go up and up and up. Now, I could lock in now, but it's tough to lock into that new number when it could potentially go down forty percent in next year or the year after. So, I guess that's...
That's a timeframe, too. So, I, we, we could just decide on the pizza oven, and it needs to be in the new building, and if he does that, he does it. If not, come back with your new plan.
So, in, in regards to the pizza oven, if I, if I could touch on that, that will be, or is, excuse me, monitored by the Minnesota Department of Agriculture. The FDA does not get involved in any of that. Um, the Minnesota Department of Agriculture is already on my property because it monitors and certifies everything I do with the wine, and so there wouldn't be anything new. And I did get a email from the Minnesota Department of Agriculture saying that they would a hundred percent approve a pizza oven going inside of a building because there's no stipulations on that, you know, and with that limited food production, the pizza, this particular pizza oven, as I stated in my letter, it, it doesn't, it's not an oven where you can set it at four, four fifty and cook chicken breasts in it, or set it at, you know, three fifty and bake in it. I mean, this oven is either at zero or eight fifty or nine hundred degrees, and the only thing that you can cook in that is wood fired pizza. With that being said, it also does not need a hood, um, so, I mean, any sort of like, I mean, there wouldn't be any sort of pan frying, any cook...
Hopefully, a motion would be so that he can use it on the property. We don't really care what corner or what building right now, and if he wants to revisit a building, we can do that later.
Well, it's a rock and a hard place, 'cause the, the pizza oven's going inside, so that's just different since it's inside. If that's a compelling case, that that's limited food preparation, sounds like maybe it is, and it needs a building permit and whatever the requirements are, what they are, and Department of Agriculture. But I'm concerned, the other pieces, not doing the new building, gutting and remodeling, and adding to the existing building should be a standalone, standalone review on its own, and if that's where the pizza oven's going, maybe you get this all nailed down and figured out and come back to us.
Okay. Sean?
Aye.
Dan?
Sean, why is that such a big issue? Help me out here.
Dan, he, he has a CUP for that tasting room.
Yeah, I realize that, yep.
And a site plan and a size and a building permit.
Yep, yep.
Just like a church, if they came back, we want to add eight hundred square feet for forty more parishioners, that would need an amended CUP. If he comes back and he wants to double the size of the existing winery, it would need an amended CUP. I don't like being in a position where you reviewed a building, well, I guess I don't want to do that, I actually want to move it here and now add it, or maybe do a second story, or maybe it's not for events, it's for dining.
And I get that, it's, it's just that...
It puts me in a position of, right?
I understand where he's coming from, all being, I mean, it's, it's really difficult right now, but when it comes to what, what he's proposing is by make, by changing this, he's not proposing an added number of people coming onto the property in addition to what he's already permitted on the conditional use permit, it's just a change in plans and the way it's gonna happen, so, to me, it doesn't make...
But, but I, I agree with you, Dan, but at the same token, we don't have anything on paper for staff to put down, and I guess what I heard, just heard Sean say, that if he wants to ask for, you know, if he were to ask to dismiss this, Sean would maybe only charge him fifty dollars to get out, get your plan up together, and figure out what you're doing, because it is expensive now. In a small company like this, it's, it's horrible with what's going on with, you know, and decisions, but at least then it's on a plan and we know what we're permitting, and I, and I understand where you're coming from. You mean, you kind of can look at it, say, what's the big deal, and let it go, but on the same thing, Sean, he has to have something, so if there is complaints down the road, you know, he goes in and remodels it all, and we don't exactly know what he's doing, or it's not on the, on the, on the CUP, and then when somebody comes in, starts complaining, or something happens, Sean doesn't have a, a plan, it puts, puts Sean in a, or the county in a position with this conditional use permit.
If it was just a pizza oven, if you were just saying, I no longer want to do the building, I want to move it to my existing building.
Okay.
I'd say that.
I guess, I guess that, I, that's what I'm, I mean, regardless, I guess why I'm here today is because it's, the pizza oven is gonna go in one of the two buildings, is my ask, is rather than having it in the trailer. Now, this won't happen now till probably late fall, if it's approved. Well, no, it would, it would happen next year if we did the addition, but my ask here today is, can I have that pizza oven moved indoors, whether it be in the new building or in the current tasting room with an addition?
And Sean is, oh, sorry, go ahead.
And I'm back to my point, are we gonna regulate what building, if it's an existing building, where he puts that thing? If there's other agencies that are regulating it, and all we really care, it sounds like, is that it's a amenity to the winery, and you're not putting a sign out at lunchtime every day, lunch buffet, pizza buffet at the, the deal, but we cover any other building projects you have in the future, but my understanding of the request was limited to the scope of a pizza oven. If we just say, yeah, go ahead and put it, you can have it there for this use, I don't know how far in we need to get as far as what corner or what building you put it.
Of an existing building or the new building that was approved. What I'm dealing with now is the remodeling and expansion of an existing building that normally would need a CUP on its own. If Mr. Dooley had never contacted me this year about anything, just called up, I want to gut my existing building, remodel it, expand it, and add a pizza oven, that would be in front of you.
I think it's important for us to, to give Sean the tool of what's wrong?
Nothing, nothing. I, I had something over you.
Forgot me again, Jan, I was...
Sorry. I skipped over him again.
I'm sorry. Did you want to go first, Ken?
No, go ahead. Go ahead, Janice.
All right. Well, I do think that Sean needs to have a paper trail, and, and it's, and it's good business just to press all the Ts and not the Is, to stay within our comfort zone of what the law says that we're supposed to do, and that's to, because as they move for another thing. So, so I, I, I think we should just, uh, stop the discussion and just take the regulation of our, of our staff and, and forward.
Dan?
I agree, Jan, we'll end the discussion here, and I'll be very brief. Uh, Sean, uh, this says to allow, or approve an amendment to an existing, to your P, to allow for unlimited food prep. Didn't I understand from you, sir, that you already had that pizza oven in the trailer and you're making pizzas in there?
Yes.
So, what's, what's the deal?
Because we don't, we don't regulate the barbecue truck that pulls onto the property.
But you regulate the, what, the barbecue that's made inside of a building?
Yeah, yeah. When people are standing outside under a tent, forty of them.
Yeah.
That's different than forty people going into the building, having a tent. That's different.
I, I...
It is.
I, I still think, I don't think that this board up here, and I can't speak for the board, but I don't think this board is opposed to it. I would think it would, it would be appropriate to continue this for one to two months. I mean, he's, he's got the duration of time, we can still make a ruling, let him go home and put a plan together as to what you want to do, so we're not debating what shed it goes in, the new shed, the old shed, over this shed, the barn, behind the house.
I sincerely apologize, this...
No, no, sir, is that okay with you?
I mean, I would really recommend you go home and put a plan together.
So, if, is it, is it okay for me to, um, think that it will be okay to put the pizza oven inside of the addition, so when I'm plating the addition or having a contractor do it, he can have an area where the pizza oven will be?
I, I can't speak for, but I would, make it the way you want it, okay? What you're thinking, what you, where your financial is, where your company is going, make it the way you want it. You already have a conditional use permit for the winery, and I mean, it's the pizza oven. Draw it the way you want it, so we know what we're looking at, and I don't, I can't speak for the board, and we're not voting now.
Yeah.
But I would think would really help, because otherwise, we're gonna sit up here and not really know what we're voting on, really.
And I apologize, it's, it's very unprofessional, I mean, to come to you guys thirty minutes before, but I, I just received the new proposal last night, and again, I apologize, it's...
And things change, and we understand that. That's why we have the mechanism to continue, so that you can put together a, a plan that works for you, and then we can work through it here.
Okay.
Just one other quick question, sir, are those already prepared, like frozen pizzas, or are you preparing?
Um, we make the, uh, we make the dough in-house, and then we import the whole tomatoes from California, so we make the sauce.
Thank you, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yes.
And I'll, I'll make a motion to continue this.
Can you, give me one second here.
How much time do you need, sir?
Um, the contractor, I think, should be able to write or draw something up, I would think in a, in a month.
I would recommend June third. Does June third look right? That would give you time, and it would still be within our...
Our time, our timeline.
Timeline.
How's it looking, Mr. Dooley?
Well, no, but it's, right.
Is that all right, June third?
Sorry, uh, June, June third is fine, or, I mean, is there, is there an option to get it in in May? Just so we know where it costs.
So, you're, you're depending upon other people to bring back a product to you within, what is it, three weeks, less than three weeks, and it's not gonna happen? That's my personal experience.
Sure. Um, I guess, would it be the plan as to a, a contract drawing, or is it, you know, you guys just want to kind of see where the existing building is and where the new addition is?
It'd need to be similar to what you've done at this point.
Okay, yep.
You know, kind of square foot this direction, draw it down, remodel this, plus or minus pizza oven.
Yep.
Or correct, I don't care what corner it is, but this building, of why we're saying June third is because I would want that...
Be fully in...
Well, I'd want, when we need that, Terry, we need...
Well, I was just gonna say, for the notification, that goes out about two and a half weeks before the public hearing.
Sure.
So, we know that exactly what you're asking for, three weeks before, two, three weeks, you know, you can just say I get there.
So, that would be mid-May.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, I just, I, so, as you know, I'm, I'm working with Ram Construction on this, on, on the initial building, and they've, they've amended it a couple different times or changed some things around, so, they have the idea of what I'm doing, it's just, I kind of want to take that building and attach it to my current one, obviously, a quarter of the size of that building, but...
All right, so what date works for you, sir?
Uh, June, June third is fine.
Okay, very well. I'll make a motion to, uh, continue this, this hearing until June third meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any other discussion?
Does anything have to be done with the existing request, then, or...
Existing, as in?
Well, it, because the existing request is for a newly constructed building.
Well, he's already got approval for that, so what I'm gonna recommend is, hopefully he gets me the plans mid-May.
Okay.
We notify that request.
Yep.
And maybe even add into it what was already notified, where he already had approval for the outbuilding, and I'll let the planning commission decide if they want to give him an option A and B. But you can still do that building, we already...
Can we do that in the motion right now?
Well, not...
For an option A and B?
Well, not for the new one. It's not, we're, we're back to where we started.
I'm not trying to complicate things, just trying to make it easy for the applicant.
No, well, we're trying to, but...
Okay.
Hopefully, we get there.
All right, any other discussion? If not, do a roll call vote. Start with Janice.
I'll vote yes.
Dutchmark, yes.
Holberg?
Aye.
Bell, dry.
Brown, dry.
All aye. Motion carries, will continue to June third.
Okay, and will I need, then again, Franklin Township's approval?
You will need to, yes, but you need to contact them on the best way possible about that.
That sounds good. Appreciate everyone's time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry for a little bit of confusion.
That's fine, that's what we're here for, work through it.
Good luck, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, we're moving on to number eight. Notice of the intent to amend solar energy farms and solar energy systems, the minimum escrow deposit and surety amount to be considered. Sean?
Are you there, Greg?
Sean, I'm here, close up.
You're awake.
He was talking about pizza oven so long.
Make you hungry.
Now, you're hungry, right?
Yes, I am hungry.
No, I was just getting your attention, we're on to the amendment item. I, I don't know if you want to do any of your typical introduction, or we just go right into it?
Sean, I think you can just go right into it with your staff that you have.
So, as you know, we have a moratorium on the solar, we have a solar work group, commissioners on it, Dan's been attending, Cory, I think Ken maybe called in on one meeting, I can't recall, but you're, you're aware of the discussions we've had. Uh, the work group decided to deal with the issue of coming up with a minimum amount of deposit for the solar farm. There, there's a table, so sort of setting a bottom line, not a ceiling, but a bottom. Um, and I know we've discussed this issue many times on the bond or the deposit, but got into a situation where it was kind of debating the lowest common denominator, or why is this even needed? That's fine if you have opinions on it, uh, but the, the work group came up with a recommendation of this language in this table. Um, so the planning commission needs to make a recommendation, one way or the other, for the county board to act on this amendment.
Hey, Sean, can I ask this question, or maybe Mike can answer it? I watched the last meeting, um, was, I'm sure I attended it, whatever. What are they all done with their moratorium? I mean, why, why are we doing piece, I mean, if the moratorium is over, and they're gonna come up with a big blanket, you know, this and whatever else they're going to come up with?
Right.
Why are we taking a piece out of what they're working on and sending it to the commissioners?
Right, so that's a good question. The moratorium was very comprehensive. It was not only on new solar projects, it was on ones that had issued CUPs that did not have the developers' agreement yet, this issue, that we were not going to move forward, even if you had a CUP, but you did not have your developers' agreement yet. So, this was kind of peeled off, because this has the potential, if approved, and the county board lifts that part of the moratorium on ones that don't have developers' agreement, those can move forward, and then in the next couple months, we'll tackle perhaps bigger issues to bring back to the planning commission and the county board that would then address overall solar and hopefully result in the moratorium be, being lifted for new project.
Is there, I guess, before we start up here, is there anybody from the public that wants to comment? Is there anybody online?
There are people online. Is there anybody from the public that wants to make comment to the amendment that's in front of the planning commission?
Go ahead. Can you give your name, please, for the record?
Terry Weezy, Buffalo Township, and we're in support of anything that the commission came up with.
Okay.
I could keep it as high as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Not seen any hands at this time. I'll let you know if it changes.
Well, Mr. Chair, just to be clear, what portions, if any, or if at all, are lifted in the moratorium?
Nothing yet, nothing yet.
Mr. Chair? Go ahead, Mike.
For Attorney Kreiser, probably, but...
For Attorney Kreiser probably, but can you speak to how this escrow deposit would be noted in a developer's agreement, if it would be, or if it would make it easier in the future as these figures may change in the next, over the next 25 years?
The table that you have here just sets for the minimum surety amount that they have to put in, in the future. So there really isn't any escalation right now, at the time, as far as, you know, inflation prices or anything like that, but this really is just setting a floor, which can go above it.
Okay, thank you.
So what, but as of right now, do we ask for the surety? In our ordinance already, it's supposed to be one and a half times the building and we don't have a minimum?
Correct, we don't have a minimum. If somebody said, wrote down on paper, 10,000, that would be 15,000.
For the value of the project?
Well, not the value, but what is estimated as to properly reclaim the property.
Mr. Chair, or Sean, or Greg, or whomever, have we seen any sureties rendered to Wright County in the neighborhood of 350,000 or 400,000 as the gauge?
Well, I'll go first. I don't think we've seen that number, but again, this is based on megawatts.
Yes, I understand.
Right, so the majority of our projects we do now are the one megawatt side. We don't do too many more of the big ones anymore.
Isn't there, you ask whoever's out there to mute themselves?
Somebody's got their hand raised, so I think there, there we go.
Continuing. Wasn't there a short period of time where ten megawatts were disallowed and the five megawatt was the maximum? Or was that the current state? It's could have been a while.
That was at the state level where they were fighting over what a solar garden is. And you had that Aurora project that was the big ones. We had the one north of Buffalo that was done by the utility, and that was 10 megawatts. And I believe we decided, since that was at the utility level, we weren't as concerned about the bond.
So what's the largest that came under the auspices of Wright County then? Five megawatt, is that still the man?
Yeah, we could have a five megawatt and above.
Have we seen any of those lately?
Not lately.
What have we been seeing lately?
We've been seeing one megawatt because that's what it's restricted to at this time at the state level.
Of those one megawatt ones, Mr. Riley, have we acquired a $100,000 surety bond from those folks?
We have an over that amount.
We have and over.
But we've also had issue with not achieving that number and not even being close to it.
Why?
Because that's what's been presented by the developer. So that leaves us in a position, county attorney's office, the county board, debating and struggling that that necessarily wasn't the intent of the ordinance or the requirement, was coming up with a very small amount. So the solar work group decided to have a floor.
How was that amount arrived at? Was it just, was it some policy set by this board?
Well, no, the ordinance language spells out the calculation. The number was and has been coming from the developer. We said you can't subtract off salvage value or resale. So they were coming up with a number and the number seemed to be getting progressively less.
So to put this in a nutshell, basically this addresses, basically a disagreement between the county and the developer as to what elements of that equation should be included to arrive at the surety amount, is that correct?
Well, maybe not so much the elements, but what the true cost and concerns are. And we have, what, three developers on the work group? And they had some debate and they brought up points, but I think they, for the most part, agreed on this minimum number for one megawatt. They may disagree it's ever going to come into play.
Yeah, I guess, I'm okay with all that and I hope we're all headed in the right direction here. But then I take a step back and say, well, how the hell do we know what's going to happen 25 years in the future? So why is this even coming up?
Mr. Chair, and I don't know which meeting you were and worked at, because I couldn't keep track, but this kind of speaks to a couple of emails that came up that people wanted things spoken to. But as far as the amounts that were thrown around, the solar companies came up with a figure of 75,000 and some change that it would cost to decommission one of these one megawatt sites in 25 years. That was what they brought to the meeting at the request of Attorney Kreiser and others at the work group. The county brought a estimate for a two megawatt cleanup cost of $214,000, so it wasn't the same. So county staff said, well, we'll cut that figure in half to get to one megawatt, so we have apples to apples. So we had the solar company, $75,000 figure, and then we had Wright County's figure of cutting that in half of $107,000. So those are the two figures that were on the table. And then I went personally and contacted another company and gave them the estimate that Wright County had line for line to get to their 107,000. And I was given a figure of $530,000 for the cleanup of one of those sites with an extra charge of 273,000 to dispose of the item. Now you speak to the fact that nobody knows in 25 years what this is going to be, but in an email, somebody wanted this addressed as to why the involvement and concern by Wright County and, you know, what, and we're all talking about worst case scenario, it came being stated time after time in these meetings, what's the worst case scenario? Well, here it is. The solar company puts up, let's say, 100,000, 75,000, they build their solar complex and then at the end of 25 years, they have to remove it. So then they start calling around and different companies, I need to remove this site, what's it going to cost? Now, they've already given 100,000, let's say, to, for a deposit, but they're given a cost of 300, 400, 500,000, let's say, 25 years to clean it up. Well, what their option is then is, well, you got my 100,000 dollars, folks, good luck to you, and walk away. Well, then the property owner has the property and the solar field then, and they could say, hey, that seven acres is not worth 500,000, so we're just going to abandon it. And then at some point, Wright County could take over that property and have to clean it up, and there would be 100,000 there, and that would be it. That's kind of the worst case scenario.
Did they also factor in reselling that, the county? Let's say the county took it back, did they factor in selling it to a private individual?
There's a lot of speculation on the efficiency after 25 years, we've been told, and how much value is left to it after that. And if a solar panel now is, let's say, a four by eight, in 25 years, is it going to be the size of your cell phone or what? You know, it's like a 25-year-old TV, are you going to take it into your house or are you going to get a new one? But those are some of the factors anyway, to speak to the figures that were thrown around.
Now, is it my understanding, Mr. Chair, is it my understanding, Commissioner, that this surety bond, it comes in the form of what, cash or letter of credit or what?
Mr. Greg?
Attorney Kreiser can speak because he was weighing heavily on how that was going to be collected and maintained.
Did you catch that, Greg?
It was pretty tough for me to catch it, talking about.
Ken's wondering the mechanisms these come in. Cash, yes, we have seen some checks and the letters of credit.
I want to say right now, everything we have on file is all cash. I'm not, we may have one letter of credit out there, but the overwhelming majority of them are cash deposits.
Okay, one, follow-up question then to that, Mr. Kreiser. Where does that money go? Is that going to a separate fund?
Yes, it's held by the auditor in a separate fund and they get a credit for interest at the bank rate that the county gets. So it's in an interest accumulating account held securely by the county.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, there is somebody from the public with a hand up.
Yes.
Lori, did you want to make a comment at this time?
Yes, I did. First, I want to thank Mike and Derek and Sean because they are so responsive to at least, I think, all constituents, but to myself, they are really, they take their time to get back to us, so I appreciate that right away. I think the advantages to solar are pretty clear. I mean, I don't have to go through those, clean energy, jobs. Out here, I'm on a farm and the farmers are pretty excited about, you know, reliable income. What I don't really understand is this whole surety issue because there are other counties that have solar. Have we actually researched how they do it? Are we really trying to kind of figure this out on our own? Because there's just so many, the state does it, and it just seems like there are models out there. And I think using worst case scenarios to try to come up with those funds is kind of like, you know, throwing darts at a dartboard with the blindfold on. And I just, I mean, I'm assuming that you've looked at some research because there's plenty of it out there. And that really is my question, because my concern is, okay, these panels are out there, which is great, and 25 years from now, these panels are, and we've had them on our church for 10 years, and we get as much electric out of them as we have had the first day we put them up. So this surety, who owns this? And if we never need to, like, say, use it for 25, 30, 40 years, doesn't it just sit there and are we assured that it's going to stay there for that purpose and those funds won't be used someplace else?
Can you answer that, Sean or Greg?
Like any land use issue, some county cities require it, some don't, some require more, some require less. I think this issue has been discussed enough by the local community that it should be our county deciding, and the state does do it at a large utility scale level, the same concept at least. I'll let Greg speak to where does this money go, but I'm pretty confident it's locked away and we can't use it elsewhere.
What, I'm following up with her question, and you just made, alluded to it, what does the state require? I mean, right now, Excel is putting up, and I'm very aware of what's going on across the river, very large ones, and that's all taken care by the PUC.
Right.
You know, so what does the state require?
Well, it's built into, just like the other plants that have protections, I don't have the document in front of me, but it was, I think it was greater than 40 megawatts or 50 megawatts, that's the utility scale level. And it's a similar table and amounts. Do they get cash or do they get a letter from the asset of Excel proving that we have assets and we'll cover things? My point was, they have a similar concept and requirement.
So if I understand you correctly, you have done research or are you just saying that you've kind of read about something somewhere? I mean, have you actually looked at this?
The county has been researching solar for at least the last five years. This is their second solar moratorium on this issue. Their saving has been addressed extensively. The first moratorium we did where we studied it, we came up with a surety system, and right now we're just proposing to put a minimum table in place.
Okay, and so I'm assuming that that research then went into those things like minimum tables and things like that, that we're not just kind of grabbing a number on the air and saying, oh, it could be somewhere from 100,000 to 500,000, because there are actually companies in Minnesota that consult and help you with those things. And I've talked to them and it's, there's a lot of stuff out there. So I just, I just want to make sure that we're actually looking at what was realistic and what's being done instead of just, I think that there's kind of almost a paranoia about solar, and I think that there's a lot of places that have solar right now in many counties, and so we can learn from them if we decide to do that. And I think that we need to have done that research, and I'm not saying we didn't, I'm just saying that it would be reassuring to me to know that we are, you know, doing this in a void, that there's been a lot of research. That's really the only thing I'm asking.
All right, thank you. Mike?
Lori, this is Mike, and I have personally spoken to personnel in other counties, both to the north and to the south of us, and they have some of the same and similar concerns and they're trying to work through those also. And I didn't find an identical plant to ours with identical figures, but we share the same concerns and we do our own research, or I did anyway, to get me where I'm at today. So I think, I just wanted to relay that to you, that I wasn't pulling facts and figures out and just looking through the internet for handouts, but I did actually talk to surrounding counties.
Okay, thanks, Mike, that's good to know.
You're welcome. We have one more person, Mr. Chair. John, did you have a comment, John? There you go, yep.
Okay, I'm John Dietering, Rockford Township, I'm the supervisor on the board there. I'm concerned that these rules are designed to keep solar out of Wright County. I don't see, it doesn't seem to me that Wright County has a dog in this fight, but cleanup, I would think, would be an issue between the landowner and the solar company. And in order for the county to be involved, the landowner would have to walk away, the solar company would have to walk away. It just doesn't seem likely that the county is going to, at some point, be liable for this. I own a farm in Littleville Township, an 80-acre farm, and I've owned cropland in Littleville Township. I have never had to prepay for the removal of a silo or a pole barn or a dairy barn or a mule lagoon or fencing. It's just, to me, it's just unprecedented that you would think that you would want to make these people prepay for removal for a non, solar panels are non-toxic, and I don't, when I see you doing this, I worry that you are trying to keep solar out of Wright County rather than, rather than have an organized set of rules. I'd be all for a set of rules, but let's not, let's not walk away from solar. The farmers need it and the residents need it. Thanks a lot.
All right, thank you. Do you have anyone else, Sean?
Not with their hand up.
Okay, is there anyone here in the public? Go ahead and state your name again, please.
Terry Weezy, Buffalo Township. I guess I'd like to comment, the, I've seen, we got one out by my place, this north of me. The amount of material that went into it is astronomical, and for a very little price to clean them up is unbelievable. Mike is, worst case, is burial, is probably getting closer to what the cost would be than others. And there's two counties bound right on the border that put a moratorium on it because of metals in them that were contagious. of metals in them that were contagious or whatever you want to call it. So, that's my comment.
Thank you. Do you want to come up? Give your name, please.
Good morning, or good afternoon, Board. I'm Charlie Burrell from Woodland Township. One thing, and I'm not speaking directly to the cost of the reclaiming, but one of the things that we talked about when I was on the Planning Commission and the County Board is not destroying the value of the land by altering it and removing the topsoil and whatever. And, Mr. Chair, you know this as a farmer yourself, if they put a seeding out there of a grass and by the end of the summer, they could drive semis across there full of grain and we do it as far as, so-
Please mute it.
But I was going to say, the land will be reclaimed without this moratorium or without any cost at all if we don't destroy the land. If the land, like when we have a gravel pit, it's a different thing because we take all the gravel out, it's not really good for much. I mean, maybe four-wheeling or something like that. But these are put on some really nice farmland and many times, there's one right across from our farm, and I said, I'm actually very fond of it. I know that in my lifetime now I won't have any neighbors, I won't have a housing development, a factory or anything, so, and I said every time I drive by, I get a little bit more affectionate toward them. But the thing is, so if you go in and you do a lot of earth moving, you destroy the land, it would not be as valuable to reclaim. Whereas if we keep with our, what we had talked about at the Planning Commission before is not doing those land alterations, doing the very, very minimum road and putting fabric in so that gravel could be removed, keeping the value of that farmland so in case the world is starving 25 years from now, we can just pull the poles up, plow it out and go back to corn and beans. So, that would be one thing that I think that we need to keep in mind, that we need to make sure that we're keeping the value as farmland like it is now as much as possible. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ken?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Deitering from Rockford Township came up with a point that kind of crossed my mind but wasn't emphasized as much until someone else stated it as well. I don't really want to see these things being driven away to somewhere else because they've got to come up with substantial upfront money in terms of the bond. And I looked at these numbers and I said, what? I should have known better that these were pretty much the direction either that we're at now or going to, but I thought they were fairly astronomical in terms of, do we want these guys here or are we going to drive them away? It's kind of a balancing act, I guess. I think solar is here to stay. I would be a big fan of solar myself if they were my neighbor, but they're not. But getting back to the surety, I think this is a bit excessive, this amount. And although Commissioner Cash Merrick noted that this is sort of a halfway in-between point between what it really could projected cost be to remove it as opposed to what the contractor is, sort of a happy medium, but still to that extent, I'm thinking, gosh, this is kind of high and I just hope we're not driving people away to other areas to pursue their solar farms and such. That's my opinion.
Kennis, anything down there? You're quiet.
No, I'm not, I don't have anything. I just know.
Mr. Chair.
Ken?
So, I mean, I've spoken to Harlan Anderson, he's got two of these on his property right now. And when it comes to the removal, whatever comes to that point, first of all, my question is to Mr. Kreiser, this surety money that's put up, let's say the solar company at the end of 25 years abandons everything and says it's up to the landowner to take care of this, is that surety money accessible by the landowner?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bomber, the money would not be accessible by the landowner. If the county went in there and cleaned up the property, the county would use the surety dollars first as part of our cleanup effort and then we would assess the property owner for anything over. That's how it's written on paper at least. Now, if that was to happen, which you described, I would anticipate a situation where the county would be working with that landowner and, you know, using these sureties in the first place, you know? So, and I would anticipate a situation with what you described where we would figure out a way for the landowner to access it first.
Okay, and then in talking to Harlan Anderson, he's comfortable with the way the surety is set up right now and you have done that for both of his agreements, correct?
I have done that for both of his and for every solar farm in the county that we approved.
Okay. And his comment on the 1 megawatt that 100,000 was ample amount of funds as a property owner. And I want to make sure that we always include the property owner in this because he's the one that's on the hook for this. And for somebody, these are mostly done on, they're all done on ag land by farmers that have quite a bit of property, I don't see them 25 down the years down the road walking away from this. They're going to want that land back and they're going to make sure that it happens. And Harlan had all kinds of ideas that he brought up to me that would be able to recycle what's there and whatever happens, that he was comfortable with that dollar amount that's put on there now. As far as the, we discussed this as a town board and as far as the 400,000 for a 5 megawatt and above, the figure seemed a little bit ambiguous. We thought that was a little excessive, the 400,000, that 300,000 would be ample. When it came to how it was going to happen in the future, it was such a remote chance of all these things falling into place that it didn't seem right to punish the solar companies and the landowner. I always want to include the landowner because they're the ones that are going to be suffering along with it, those that have the ability to put these in, that it would be unfair to do that with these high dollar amounts. And that's just from my discussion with a landowner that currently has two of them. He had other issues with them, but it wasn't the surety and I can go into that later, but that's not for this meeting.
Ken?
Mr. Kreiser?
Yes, Ken.
Mr. Kreiser, I have a question relative to, let's say 25 years down the line, the solar company still in existence, they clean up the place, great. What happens to that surety money they put down 25 years earlier?
They get it back.
With the interest?
If they gave us cash, they would get the interest that accumulated with the county, yes.
All right, thank you.
And I guess, you know, listening and I've listened to that other meeting that they had, I agree, or it sounds like on some of this stuff, we're getting to the point of not wanting solar in Wright County. We're making it more and more difficult. And I guess if that's what the county wants to do, I mean, we will draw that line in the sand. But at the same token, we talk about 25 years and what to do with solar panels and this and that and the cleanup and where does it go? I guess maybe I'm thinking too small, but I'm looking at the bigger picture. In 25 years, it was in the Star Tribune that they're going to be shutting down the Sherco plant, they're going to be re-converting it over potentially to natural gas and they're having problems with that plan. They're putting in a massive solar panel, I mean, literally thousands of acres across the river to take care of that. People, I was part of it or I knew of it, there were several people in our township up in Clearwater that was heavily involved in trying to shut down the power plant up there because the coal, the coal dust was going all the way up to the Arrowhead of Minnesota and you could see it and coal was bad. And it kind of seems like we're working here on ordinances. We've had two moratoriums in the county and I'm not saying we're supposed to put every acre into solar, but at the same token, we keep making it more and more difficult for it, where are we going to get our electricity from? We're shutting down, we can't have nuclear anymore because the people say it's not green and it's not safe. We can't burn coal anymore. We have tons and tons of coal, but we can't mine that anymore if keep putting things on there. So, then we sit here with solar and saying, no, we don't want solar and it's going to cost so much. Once it's there, it's going to stay there for a long time on that property because the infrastructure is going to be there with the power lines. I'm not saying we don't need a surety, that's not what I'm saying, but it just seems like Wright County is trying to push solar out. And I never really thought of it until that last meeting when Mr. Anderson made the comment and a light went on in my head. It's kind of like, yeah, you're right, Mr. Anderson. It's no different than CRP. CRP came in in the 70s and my grandfather's farm was probably one of the first ones put into it. And people said that will never come out of that, that will never get that back into production. Well, this year it's got irrigation put on it, there's a well drilled on it and we're going, farmer's going to be irrigating it, not me, but a farmer's irrigating it and it went back into production. So, to say the solar may never get taken down or go back into production like Mr. Burrell was saying, as long as we don't wreck the land underneath it, it can still go back to production. We have to have electricity. I don't, I'll argue that with anybody here, this United States is not willing to go back to fire and candles. They're just not going to. And we, as a county, we got to, we had this in the landfill and I voted against the landfill, I'll admit it. But at the same token, we have to take care of our own county. We need electricity in our county. So, if we have solar panels and solar gardens in our county and things happen or don't happen, at least we've taken care of our county and our businesses and our cities. When we permitted the solar panel thing out there by Buffalo out here, that was the utility, that was supposed to be coming in here to Buffalo for electricity for Buffalo. Well, they've got solar, they're not burning as much coal or nuclear. So, I think the county has really got to think, what do we want? Because it seems like we don't want it. If we don't want it, then down the road, we may have, we may have issues with electricity in 25, 30 years. Think down the road and now to the cleanup of these things, but where's our electricity going to come from? Coal is going to potentially be shut down across the river in Becker because that's just what they're planning for. It was in the Star Trip. I mean, I'm not just speculating on that. It was stated in there, by 2025, it's going to be going down. How are we replacing that? Look at the brownouts that California has and the different things going on. And let's just keep making it tougher and tougher for solar or for windmills or for whatever? We all need electricity. But I think we got to look at that and keep that into consideration when we're putting all these ordinances into place. That's my soapbox. Ken?
Well, thanks for that insight, Mr. Chair. You had mentioned that, you know, after the 25-year-or-so period, it could go back into production. I would presume you mean ag production, correct? One other step that could be done, it could be put back into solar again in a more efficient, more enhanced manner, whatever that future holds. Fred, though, let's don't be too hung up about, you know, after 25 years, we need to get that solar panel on there because if the, if the situation is as directed towards solar in the future, losing our conventional power producers, yeah, it's going to be worthwhile to put, my estimation, it'd be worthwhile to put solar right back in, enhanced new-age panels, for example. So, yeah, I thank you for your comments and for the most part, I agree with them. Thank you.
All right, do we have any other discussion? So, does somebody want to make a motion to send this to the county commissioners as presented to us?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Great.
Do the whole paragraph out here, right? With all the deposits and is that part of it?
If that's your motion.
I'll make a motion to amend the solar energy farms and solar energy systems ordinance as follows. A letter C, the agreement shall require the applicant to-
Mr. Chair? Yeah. I don't think you necessarily have to read, Greg, can you help me here? We don't have to read the whole existing and modified language into the record?
Mr. Chair, Sean and Commissioner Catchmark, no. You would just be moving to refer ordinance amendment 21-3 to the Wright County Board and you recommend its approval.
All right, thank you. I'll recommend the ordinance amendment under 21.3 to the County Board for approval.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any more discussion? If there's no more discussion, we'll start with a vote. Janice, you want to start, please?
Yes, I'll vote aye.
Catchmark votes aye.
Bomber?
Aye.
Felger, no. Bravender, no.
Mall is no with a tie. How do we proceed, Greg? What is your recommendation?
If you have a tie, I'd recommend you send it up to the County Board with no recommendation.
All right. Do you want that as a motion or just send it on?
I think it's an order unless the Board has a different option.
Do I have a second to send it to the County Board with no recommendation?
I'll make that motion.
Bomber makes that motion.
Bomber made the motion, Bravender seconded it. Is there any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, all those in favor will start down here with Bravender.
Bravender votes aye. Felger votes no. Catchmark votes aye.
Pat?
Mall votes aye.
Mall votes aye. Motion passes to send it on to the county commissioners with no recommendation. Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Chair, I think it'd be worthwhile when they look at the public hearing this in relation to ordinance amendment 21-3 has been closed and has ended at this point.
Okay. Chair recognizes that the public hearing is closed. Do we need a motion?
Did you want a motion on that, Greg, or is that adequate?
It wouldn't hurt to have a motion if we could.
All right. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing on this?
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing on this.
Thompson's got the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, the roll call vote, start with Bravender.
Bravender votes aye.
Felger votes aye.
Catchmark votes aye.
Thompson votes aye.
Bomber? Pat? Mall votes aye. Motion carries.
Do it somehow. I'm going to keep voting aye if anyone ever hears me.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Sean, do we have anything else?
No.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
No discussion. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
See you next time.